Welcome to this meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Radnor Township. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we get started, I will give notice to the executive session that was held on October 22nd of 2020, at which we discussed legal matters, including the matter docket at CV-2020 of 005124, as well as other non filed legal matters, personnel matters, and matters involving real estate. Moving on to public participation, before members of the public come up, I want to note that the ordinance number 2020-18, which would amend and restate Article One, Chapter 260 of the Radnor Township Code relating to the amusement tax, has been removed from the agenda as a result of which we will not be considering that today. Otherwise, if you want to come on up and speak your mind on any subject that is interesting to you, please do so. Seeing no public comment, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I will move well first. Is there any item that any?
Commissioner Larkin.
Oh, sorry, Sean, you had wanted to say something. Go ahead.
Yeah. So, not this Sunday, this past Sunday, Chief Flanagan organized a block party for Garrett Hill, and it was very, very successful. The neighbors were happy. I know Commissioner Barowski was there, Commissioner Maroney was there. There were a lot of happy faces, and it's something that doesn't happen all that much on the east end of the township. So, from me and from the residents that were there, Superintendent Flanagan, thank you very, very much. It was very, very, it was great, and we appreciate it. And one more quick thing, too, which again is our staff working on Sundays, as we did two weeks ago, and then, and I wish Tammy was here, but at The Willows, there was a spooktacular festival that was geared toward little kids, kids that were five and under. And again, it's just great that we have a staff that is so dedicated to our community. It's not the Great Pumpkin Festival that we usually have, but it's something. The street festival, or the block party, was not the Garrett Hill Fourth of July Parade, but it was something. So, to the staff that makes this happen, and from the people of Garrett Hill on Ward Seven, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there any item that any commissioner would like to withdraw from the consent agenda?
Well, one item here, I just noticed. Motion to authorize the sale of the Land Rover, K-9 Land Rover. Can somebody go through that with me? I thought those, that we acquired two Land Rovers that were a gift, $70,000 Land Rovers that the township paid $20,000 for, and now we're selling one. Is that accurate?
Okay, here 2E is going to be withdrawn. Before we hear from staff, is there any other item that we want to have withdrawn? Is there any item that staff wants to have withdrawn? Okay, moving to item 2E. We heard the question, I assume, Chief?
Correct. Commissioner Booker, we did a joint partnership with Mainline Land Rover when we purchased the one K-9 vehicle. The other vehicle, we retrofitted an existing car when we started the program. That vehicle has ended. It is, it is no longer worth fixing, so it has ran through its existing life, and that is why we're asking to sell. It's been decommissioned. The parts and other things that were bought, such as the light bar, the cage, all of that have been reinstalled in another vehicle. Basically, it follows the same program we do with our cars, as long as it's still usable, gets reinstalled.
So, you're selling the Land Rover? Is that what, that's my question. This is the Land Rover, right? It's a $70,000 Land Rover?
I honestly don't have the purchase price, but the ballpark that you're saying is correct. I don't have that in front of me, just since we bought it a while ago. So, it has ended its life, and it is no longer fixable. It'll be towed out.
Is there any provision with Mainline? Do they know this, or do they want it? Do they, are they aware that the partnership, which was they gave a $70,000 vehicle for $20,000? Is that a, is that something they're aware of, that this is being sold, and they have an opportunity to take it back? Or do they care, or not?
You know, if I could, Chris, just the, regardless of how the vehicle was acquired, what we're following here tonight with the, the sale of the asset is consistent with the township's, the requirement that we, anytime we sell an asset, it has to go through a public bid. So, regardless of the arrangement when the vehicle was purchased, this is the back end of it, when it has served its useful life and needs to be disposed of. And as the chief pointed out, this is consistent with all of the other vehicles in the fleet. When they are retired, they are sold at auction.
So, again, my question is, does Mainline Land Rover know this, and are they aware that this is being sold after it was mainly a gift? And then, second, what is it being replaced? Is it being replaced with another Land Rover, or with a, a American-made or a more reasonably-priced SUV?
Well, the answer to the question, the second question, is the latter. The vehicle's being replaced with not another Land Rover. That was a one-time transaction, and it was just a single vehicle. It was a single Land Rover, and the, the details of that acquisition have been satisfied, or the obligations of it. Whether or not Mainline is, Land Rover has been notified, I'm not sure, but if we were to notify them, it would be that we have to follow our charter in disposing of the asset.
I understand, but it's probably worth a courtesy call. No further questions.
Is there any consent agenda item that the public would like to pull from the list? Hearing none, I will move for the approval of the consent agenda, items 2A through M. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes six to zero. Moving on to committee reports.
We never moved, we never moved for the sale of the township vehicle.
I'm sorry, I thought that you just wanted to have a discussion about it. I move for 2A through 2M, including E.
All right, please show my vote as, as a no on item 2E.
Okay, we can, we can have a separate vote for 2E. Is there a separate motion on 2E? I'll move. Is there a second?
So, I'll move.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Great. Moving on to 3B, ordinance number 2019-15, adoption, amending the township zoning ordinance to allow townhouse developments in certain areas of the C-3 Service Commercial District, and to provide regulations. Therefore, I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Nick, could you read us in on this?
Yes. You've seen this before, actually, just looking at my notes. I think the first time we saw it was in December of last year, so we're approaching pretty quickly one year on this ordinance. You would recall that this is a C-3, an amendment to the C-3 zoning district. Currently, in this particular area where the amendment is applicable, we have a mixed use already of commercial and residential uses. What we're requesting is a townhouse development be permitted with certain restrictions in this C-3 area. Those restrictions being, it has to be 450 feet from an arterial, which is basically Lancaster Avenue, which moves it to the north side of the train tracks, and also other requirements regarding setbacks, minimum lot width, things of that nature. It received unanimous recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission, also received recommendation for approval from Delaware County Planning Commission. The plan has since been submitted as a preliminary final plan to the township. Again, the Planning Commission recommended unanimously of approval of that preliminary plan pending adoption of the ordinance.
Is there any commissioner comment?
Again, and you're right, we've talked about this multiple times, just one issue on stormwater, but may I just ask, why was this pulled two weeks ago, or we, it was on the agenda, and then it was pulled? I noticed there was one change.
Yeah, there was a wording change, I believe, regarding.
Setback, like curb line or something, front, it was like one word.
The township requested that we added a word so that we can't change the curb line.
Okay.
In other words, to protect, you know, so that you can't.
I did see that was, I was like, that was the one, that was why we held it. Okay.
And Rich, on stormwater, we're not asking for a waiver.
Don't change your mind on that. This is recorded.
I'm just telling, I'm just telling you, on the plan, I'll defer to my partner over here, we're not at.
What about other, other developers who might be able to avail themselves in this area?
They would be available, then. They would have the.
They would have their right. Okay, well, I appreciate that. Again, we have, especially in this area, other townhomes, there's flooding, we have more and more flooding in the township, so my big concern is replacing these facilities with higher density that could cause, and is likely to cause, more stormwater. So, want to avoid having any more waivers of the stormwater infiltration requirement of the township ordinance. So, I appreciate Attorney Canelia making that a condition of this approval.
I did not say that.
Oh, wait, oh, okay, oh, wait, did I, did I overstate that?
I know Baron has something to say about the ordinance, so I don't know, he'll probably stand up and, you know, I can address them. I spoke to Baron today, he was nice to give me a call. They were very minor items, that basically wording or superfluous items. For example, in the, in townhouse, under definition, there's a number four there. That's really just, you know, there's no, I think it's just a typo error, that that should be removed. In one of the sections, it excluded a particular section of the code, but that section of the code would be applicable anyway. And he was, also had mentioned in the area requirements that instead of townhouse, I should say dwelling, although I think it says each townhouse, so differentiates there, and there's also an additional wording in perens, under side, that is also mentioned, you know, in, when you go opposite it. So, it's just a superfluous item.
Are you asking us to make amendments?
I prefer, if the amendment involves sending it back, I would say no. I think this is just cleaning up the ordinance. It probably would have been done anyway when it was written into the township code. So, if it doesn't involve going back anywhere, we're okay with Baron's recommendations. If it does, we would request it just be adopted the way it is right now.
Okay, let's go through the list. Could you tell me again, what are the recommendations that you are okay with if it does not involve a procedural?
Correct.
Yeah, so what are the recommendations?
Under Article One, we're a system townhouse, there's in perens a number four. That really, I think probably that was supposed to be 280-4, you know, which is the definition section of the zoning code, and that number four just got left in, that perens four.
Oh, okay. That's, there is a.
To buffer, was that what you said?
No, it has nothing, it's not.
No, there's a defined term, townhouse, and before the defined term, which is all caps italicized and bolded, there is, tabbed to the left, a number four in parentheses, which is just kind of hanging out there. Is that what you're talking about?
That's it, yep.
Okay, got it. You want the force stricken?
Yeah, and I think that, again, I think that was probably supposed to be 280-4 at some point, and just somehow, you know, and we have no objection to that being stricken.
Okay, what next?
Under 280-55, the code reads, after it says Section 280-45, the last word on that page.
Yep.
In the code, it says, "and" 280-101. 280-101 is a section that deals with nonconformities in the township, which apply anyway to this ordinance, or any other ordinance in our zoning code. Again, you know, I think it's there, it means what it means, it's still applicable, but again, you know, Baron raised it. If it doesn't involve any issues, we have no objection to including "and" Section 280-101.
Okay, what next?
Under, on the second page, it, it says minimum lot width for each townhouse, and again, we would have no objection if that was changed for each dwelling. And the reason is that townhouse is defined in the code, and even though we specify each townhouse, the word for each dwelling probably, again, may be more applicable in this case, and avoids confusion in the future.
Okay, so.
So, minimum lot width for each dwelling, 20 feet?
Correct.
Is that correct?
For each dwelling, 20 feet.
Okay.
Instead of each townhouse. Same thing, same, it's just a matter of saying dwelling instead of townhome or townhouse.
Okay.
And then finally, where it says side, and we have perens between buildings, if you look across from that, again, it says between buildings, so striking the between buildings for side would, again, probably avoid later confusion possibly.
Mr. Grimm, that doesn't sound to me like we would need to re-advertise. These are all mostly typographical and don't change the substance of the, of the ordinance. Do you disagree?
I do. Any, any type of change in this matter, we'll, we would have to re-advertise. My recommendation is to go ahead and adopt the resolution, if you so choose, and then we'd clean it up at a later date.
Okay, got it.
I had one more, one more question. Nick, what's the benefit of having this apply 450 feet from an arterial? Is there some benefit to that? Where did that come from?
It limits it to this C-3 area, and doesn't apply to any other areas in the township. Not this particular C-3 area, but the C-3 area in this, across the street from the tracks there, and what I've always known as Little Chicago, but North Aberdeen Avenue.
Yes, painted on the bridge.
Right.
Yeah. What's the, but there's no benefit, it's mainly, it isolates this C-3 area.
Correct.
From others, there's, but there's no real benefit to 450 feet from an arterial for a townhouse.
It just isolates it, no, it just isolates it from other areas in the township. So.
Townhouses are fine within 450 feet of a major arterial.
Right.
In general.
Right, and, but the only area where it would be applicable in our code is this area here. That's the reason for it.
Going back to this as being before you, over a year, the original thought was that there are, there is a C-3 area that is on the south side of the railroad tracks, that is closer to Lancaster Avenue, and there was sensitivity at the time that that was intended to be a commercial area, that it had viability as a commercial area in the township. And this was not to apply in that location, where it is more appropriate for a more intense commercial development. On the north side of the tracks, where it's more difficult access for trucks because of the lower height of the railroad bridge, and because there is, there is more impact on the surrounding, already existing residential neighborhood, that was the intent of the 450 feet. It was really because those two spaces are, while zoned the same zoning, they're very different places, and the 450 feet got you to that place on the north side of the railroad track where this was more appropriate. Does that address that?
But otherwise, again, there's no issue with having townhomes within 450 feet of an arterial.
If this board decided that's what they wanted to do?
Presumably, it is zoned for townhomes at some other place within 450 feet of an arterial.
Yes.
In the code.
I would assume, well.
Or is it not? I don't, I don't know.
Maybe, yeah. And maybe under a commercial office. I'm not really positive.
Is it, is it not good to have high-density housing near a major arterial? That's my question.
I think in, oh, this is just my personal opinion, in today's world, it appears as if the mixed use is what everyone wants. You know, the people who live in apartments and townhomes want to be within walking distance of the commercial district, as we have in the Wayne Business District, and I think that can carry, carry over to other areas as well. But that's not before this board, and that'd be up to this board to decide perhaps at a later date.
Is there any additional commissioner comment? I'll remind the board that this is directly affecting the abandoned property along, it's North Aberdeen Avenue, right? There were a couple of meetings with residents on this. All of the residents seem to be very much in favor of getting rid of the abandoned and burned-out property that is there. This seems like a great way to do it, so I'm hoping that we can move forward with this. Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment?
And again, just for clarity, we're going to approve this without the changes that Nick went through.
That's what's listed now. All of the changes seem non-substantial to me. I don't know that we would, well, whatever. Go ahead.
Baron Gemmer, South Wayne. And I'm not against this. This is more the cleanup, and if the procedural way, because these are considered significant enough changes, that you approve it now and then come back and clean it up, I'm perfectly fine with that. Let's just not forget to clean it up if that is, if that is the case. I also just wanted to give a little quick background as to why some of these things happened. The original definition of townhouse, when this first came out, was a single dwelling with, you know, dwellings attached to it by party walls. So, it was synonymous with dwelling before. The problem with that definition of townhouse going into 280-4 was it now, it made some R5 issues, because R5 uses the term townhouse, which at one point was taken out of the definition, so it screwed that up. So, I brought that to Nick's attention a while back. They changed it. So, now townhome is not a dwelling, it's a building of three dwelling, at least three dwelling units. So, the definition got changed, that's the one you saw with that floating parenthetical four in front of it, but some of the things that followed from that didn't get changed that, that should have gotten changed. So, for example, under the minimum lot width for each group of townhouses, where it says parenthetically, three dwelling units or more, that's unnecessary, because a single townhouse is now three dwelling units or more. So, that's more of a administrative cleanup, doesn't affect it one way or the other. But where it says minimum lot width for each townhouse, that used to be a dwelling, under the old definition. Well, now it's not, it's per three dwellings, so that way the 20 feet doesn't apply. So, either 20 feet would change to 60, but more rationally, it should change to minimum lot width for each dwelling, because if you had a townhouse of four or five together, that would be 80 or 100. So, that's the more significant change, based upon that, that, and then the side, where it says side in between buildings in parentheses, the trouble is the three-dimensional requirements to the right of it, only two of those are between buildings, and the one that is between buildings parenthetically says it's between buildings. It's, the other two are truly just side yard setbacks in aggregate, as well as to the lot line. So, again, I have no problem if we clean these up later, you know, there's not going to be another development coming in soon. This one complies, I'm sure, with all this, so I have no problem, but we have enough trouble with the zoning code, I figured, let's keep it clean as we can. Thank you.
Guys, I have a list of the changes. I'll send it. I'm going to ask that we advertise the proposed changes, assuming this is picked up by the board, so that we can just clean that up on the back end, but otherwise, I guess we'll vote on it as it is tonight, so that we can keep this process moving along.
Well, could I ask, what, what is the harm in making the change? I'm especially struck by the use of townhouse, which it should say dwelling, because it's inapplicable to the townhouse as defined as three buildings. So, I think it's a pretty serious change that needs, I think it is substantive. So, how quick, why not just change it and then bring it back and, and get it, get it right the first time?
Two reasons. First, I don't think it's inapplicable just because there's three dwelling units. I think that it's duplicative, but more importantly, because the residents want to get the bombed-out building replaced, and if we have to re-advertise this, it's going to be, what, at least another month?
More than that, probably at least one or two, may have to go back to Planning and Delaware County Planning Commission.
Yeah.
But why would that happen? Why wouldn't that same thing happen if we have to make these changes at a later, a later date then?
Because they can get started with their development and their building process under the existing ordinance, and then when there's a change in the ordinance, it won't affect their ability to build, because both, they will have applied under the existing ordinance and plans, so they'll be grandfathered onto that one, but their, their plan will comply with the new ordinance as well, so they'll be agnostic as between the two.
My concern is we don't ever fix this. That's what I think is the concern, is that it'll go in and not get fixed.
Can I ask that we put the fix on the next agenda?
We can't put the fix on the next agenda, but we can advertise it, and I'm asking who we put the fix on as soon as possible afterwards. We just have to advertise a certain number of weeks in advance, and we won't meet the deadline if we advertise now. Is there any additional commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment? Is there any additional public comment? Calling the vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes four to two.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving to item 3C, conditional use applications. Trafford Road, Hamilton Estate, motion to set date for conditional use hearing. I guess we don't have a date yet, so I'll make the motion once we get a proposed date, and then we'll look for a second, but Mr. Grimm, if you could read us in on this?
I, we did, or you did, already talked to this with, with John. We have the conditional use, it's for the density modification development. I think tonight, you need to do two things. One, you need to figure out how you're going to conduct the hearing, i.e., do you want to do it as a full panel, or you want to get a hearing officer to do it? And I believe John has already talked to you about those differences. If you do have any more questions, I can answer those. And then, two, we have to set a date before the end of this year, which is the, the first hearing, the, the second or third hearing, if necessary, could it be, happen after December 31st. So, I, I think that it would be appropriate to set that hearing. I, I think John would like to see it in the beginning of December, but that's, you know, personal preference for his calendar, but that's up to you to set.
Okay, I'm going to suggest then, when we break this into two votes, the first will be whether we're going to handle this, or if we have a hearing officer. If the answer is we handle it, then the date is relevant to all of us, and we can, I guess, in public, pull out our calendars and propose a date. Do you need us to pick a date for this immediately? Because this is going to be really unwieldy.
Um, I, no, you don't need to, but you do need to set a date at, you know, at your next hearing, I would believe, and the longer this takes, obviously, the longer it's to get together, and you want to give all parties enough time.
Got it. I'm going to suggest then, that today, we just take the vote, and I'll open this up to other commissioners for comment before we take the vote, obviously, but I'm going to suggest that we take the vote on whether we're going to hold this, or whether we pass this to a hearing officer, or an individual board member, and then I'm going to suggest we circulate a doodle poll from administration to the commissioners with dates that they're going to be available, and we'll go from there and vote on it at the next meeting. So, I'll start by moving that the board hear this as a board, as opposed to either identifying a single member or a hearing officer. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any commissioner comment?
My, my comment would be, why won't we bring this before community development? So, I had requested that this be a community development item, and I would like to see that before we even talk about a conditional use. Failing that, I think it's better for this board to, to hear the conditional use for density modification as, a board as the whole, or en banc, I'd say that's not en banc, but whatever, you know, it's the board as a whole. And I will remind those who might have been around at the time, we had a density modification for Ardrossen, and it was, we had a hearing officer and a lengthy process where I feel that the community was really not afforded ample opportunity to comment and address the issues. And moreover, once they finally did receive the density modification, they've been before us more times than anybody else ever to modify plans subsequent. They must have been before us 20 or 30 times since the density modification for Ardrossen was approved. Obviously, obviously, the people who were involved with the original density modification did not get a chance to comment on the final plan as it looks today. So, I would, I would say, in light of the experience we had with the Ardrossen Estates, that we not use a, a hearing officer, but we review it as a board, and that as in addition to reviewing it as a board, we should have it come before the smaller community development community. committee, which is, which I'm the chair of, for fleshing out of the issues before we even have a vote on it. So those, that's my comments. I did second the motion for us to hear it as a board, though.
Commissioner Larkin, can I just make a suggestion? Because in this scenario, there's a couple, and I'll defer to you, Mr. Grimm, there are a couple scenarios where if we don't essentially outsource it, and we do it ourselves, we could have John Rice run the meeting, or you run the meeting. So for the people at home that aren't particularly well-versed in this, if you could go through what those options are, because there are, there are several options, and I think the people at home should, should have an idea.
Several options, as in, we have, you, your first option is have, you know, all the Board of Commissioners hear it. The second option is to have a hearing officer, which either is one of you, or a hearing officer, typically, it's an attorney that you would appoint. Now, with the person that you appoint, you can do it two ways. One is that hearing officer hears the testimony and provides a determination. The second one is, they hear and they submit then material to you, and you actually make the decision as a board.
Okay. I also thought there was one where we would be up here, and we'd have someone else run the meeting as well, maybe Mr. Rice or somebody.
If you have it up there, I think John would run it.
And John, so what option is that? Is that a separate?
That's the first one. That's your, that's you hearing it and deciding, and John would run the hearing.
Okay.
That's what was moved and seconded.
Okay. That's, so, I just want the people at home to understand all this. I am not a lawyer. Most of the people, half the people up here are lawyers, half of them aren't.
Three and a half people? Oh, well, that's a six here today.
So, to me, if I had a vote, or at least where I would steer this, is to have Mr. Rice up here running. And I think that this is a township issue, and should stay in the township and not, not be outsourced.
You do have a vote, Sean.
I know that.
Lisa, I think you wanted to say something.
Oh, is it my turn now? That's all right. So, you know, I could support this board being the ones to hear it, but I have a, a lot of concerns around this board, you know, appropriately conducting themselves in a way that this is fair, that all the commissioners get to be heard when it comes to the subject, as well as the, as well as the public. And I'm also concerned, how do we accommodate, you know, all of the public that may want to come and participate, given the COVID restrictions right now? So I would want to be able to understand that, here in the room, I, how, how that would work. Because it's my understanding, this is a hearing, then everybody asks questions, then everybody can comment on each individual question. Am I correct? So if there's multiple people wanting to comment on multiple items, how would, how's that going to work, and what is that going to look like?
You can run a meeting a lot of different ways, and I don't know exactly how, I don't think I've ever sat in a meeting with John doing it. But John can conduct it and then ask questions in various, various ways. And one of them is to do it that way. I would think that you're going to have that in here, and you're probably going to have some kind of hybrid, that if you have more people come in, that they would be able to submit questions and everything else. And then they would bring up those questions, you know, during that comment period, or those question period, which they could either write in, you know, via the, the internet, or they could call in.
So this isn't considered a board meeting? This is a special hearing? So we could make accommodations that people can email in? Because right now, they can't email into our meetings.
Yes. I would think that you, you would have to have that type, that you could have some sort of hybrid, that they would come in. I would, I would, I think that John already spoke to you about this, but if you're going to do it, I would make it its own meeting, and the only thing on the agenda that night, that it would be a special meeting. I think it would just be too hard and too long with everything else that you'd have on your agendas.
Wouldn't it take a couple of meetings?
It probably will take three or four.
Probably will.
Yes.
And several of the community may actually be, they would file as a party to the, to the action.
It is my understanding that parties have already said that they would.
So what we just witnessed is exactly what I'm discussing, when it comes to commissioners giving other commissioners opportunity to speak, everyone having a fair opportunity, and we conducting it as something that we can be proud of. So if I'm going to vote for this, that is something that I would like to have a commitment from everyone on this board. You know, this isn't about just one commissioner and their questions. This is about all of us, and how we are going to look at this development when it comes to, you know, impact on the township, impact on the surrounding residents, and, you know, what we want to do. So that, I, I have grave concerns around that. I don't know that that is something that, I, I'm fearful that that's a commitment, that we can't abide by.
I have a question about process. If we are sitting sort of as the hearing board, and John Rice or another attorney is running the hearing, are we asking questions, or are we simply sitting as judge?
You are sitting as judge, but you are also asking questions. You, you need to ask questions about what's going on. So you, the, there is going to be multiple questions. It's, it's almost, and I'm just going to use this analysis, but it's, it's not, it is like a zoning hearing board meeting, where you have the applicant coming up, putting in testimony and everything else. Then you have comments from any other party that is party to that application, who has elected to be a party and gained party status. Then you also have questions from the board, and then you also have questions from the public. So all of those are, are going to have questions.
Since this is...
I would, I would then sort of suggest that one of the meetings that we schedule is just with board members, to walk us through it, to give us the rules, to help us understand what our role is, and have some sort of prep. Because as mentioned, only three of us are attorneys. We have different personalities on this board, and how we approach questioning those who come in front of us. And I would like to get some ground rules laid out before we start this process.
I, I think absolutely they can go through. I know John did answer some of those questions. I think he is putting a memo together to you, to kind of describe it, and describe what your participation is going to be. And hopefully, that answers all of your questions. But if it does not, then he can have a meeting with you as well.
I'll second Commissioner Borowski's concerns regarding the ability of this board to govern itself in an efficient manner, and get through a questioning process without a lot of back and forth. I, I don't think that we can do that in an efficient manner. My concern is not so much the optics, or the problems that it creates for those that come before this board. My optics, or my concern, is for the timeliness. We're getting towards the end of the year. Everyone's calendars are busy. I think that scheduling alone is going to be enough of a problem. I, for one, will not be voting for this board to hear it, but will be voting for a hearing officer to conduct this procedure in this hearing.
Commissioner Larkin, we have your opinion on this, since you are the commissioner that represents this ward?
I very much do not want to do this. I think it's going to be unpleasant. I think that we're going to tick off absolutely everybody who's involved, both in the process and in the ultimate outcome, just because that's what happens in all of these. That being said, I think that handing this over to a hearing officer poses a couple of distinct problems. The first is, if the hearing officer ultimately offers recommendations of findings of fact and conclusions of law, that this board rejects, we create some appellate issues, because this is a big enough development, and it's going to have enough effect on people that all of the residents and the developer will have a, a strong enough interest that I suspect there will be an appeal, no matter what the outcome. I also think that, so, so, to sum up that, if the hearing officer offers proposed findings of fact that we reject, then that creates, maybe not an appealable issue, but it creates an argument on appeal for one side or the other, which I think is a mistake for us to do. I also think that the residents and the developer have an expectation that this board will conduct hearings. And while our only obligation is to conduct those hearings impartially and fairly, which I expect that we can and absolutely will do, we do have an obligation to fulfill our role as elected servants in this case, which is, we're supposed to have this hearing. We're permitted to have a hearing officer, but I do view that as a degree of escapism, which will not be welcomed by the people that we work for, which in this case is both the developer and the residents. So I think that we're going to have problems politically if we force this on somebody else. I think we're going to have problems legally if we force this on someone else. I think it's going to be very unpleasant, but we will work through the scheduling. I anticipate very much that all parties will allow the commissioners who are unable to attend, to attend any particular hearing to review the transcripts and get caught up that way. It will not require all seven of us to be here at every single one of these meetings, but I also expect that we will all make this a priority, and we will make sure that all or a large majority of us are present at each hearing. So with that, I mean, I made the motion, you know which way I'm going to be voting, but those are my reasons, basically.
And can you, or, Mr. Grimm, can you clarify what exactly this is? So we're not talking about the land development plan. We're not talking about what's actually going there. This is a change in the, in the use.
This is within your ordinance, because the way that the ordinance is, is written, it says that if they're going for a density modification, that it's, that you have to go through a conditional use. The conditional use in that section has specific conditions that they have to meet, and then they also have to meet the more general that's in your conditional use, so they have more general ones. So it's, it's, it, instead of having a zoning hearing board listen to the zoning portion, this is for the Board of Commissioners to hear.
So this is very limited in scope? It's not how much stormwater you're putting in, and what's your impervious surface, and all that kind of stuff that comes up? It's more limited in scope?
It, it's a little bit more limited in scope, but you, it depends on the ordinance and what they're asking for. So you're going to go through all of those. But it's not the whole saldo, no.
I think we've all spoken, so I'll ask, is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? Hearing none, I will call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes five to one. I'm going to ask Bill and Peggy if you guys could circulate a doodle poll, or a Google whatever, to us all, so that we can start getting dates together. And at the next meeting, we can put an additional agenda item, asking for us to confirm that hearing date. Moving on to item 3D, Resolution Number 2020-123, consideration to extend the emergency declaration deadline associated with Resolution Number 2020-61, from October 31, 2020 to March 31, 2021, or such earlier date as the board may specify by subsequent resolution, to allow for continued relaxed outdoor dining enforcement. I am going to so move, and I'm going to offer an amendment if this gets a second.
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 So I'm going to offer an amendment. I have received a ton of complaints related to a discrete number of businesses who are playing music. It tends to be live music, and it's bothering other residents. I support this motion. I think it's very important for us to move forward with intent, but I'd like to propose the following addition. Following now therefore be it resolved in that paragraph, there would be a new paragraph that would say something to the effect of, "All noise created by those who take advantage of Resolution 2020-123 shall not exceed 63 a-weighted decibels between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m., and 55 a-weighted decibels between the hours of 7:00 p.m. and 10:00 a.m. Violations of this section may be sanctioned at the discretion of stash, of staff and township officers with a warning, a citation, or revocation of the permission to take advantage of this Resolution 2020-123." So first I'm going to ask, is there a second?
Can you please restate the times? Because you had two PMs in there, one 10:00 p.m. to...
7:00 p.m. to 10:00 a.m. And then 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Does that coincide with the noise ordinance?
Our noise ordinance doesn't have a decibel requirement. Our noise ordinance just says if it is harmful to, I'm going to misquote this, but it's something like physically annoying, which I don't know what that means parenthetically. The residents have complained frequently about not just the noise that we're hearing, but also the, but also the inability to really enforce that noise ordinance because of the lack of specificity. And I should, I should further note, I just gave a decibel limit. It should be at 100 feet from the point source of the sound.
And can I ask where you got the decibel levels?
Ripped off entirely from the West Town Township noise ordinance.
Commissioner Larkin, I have a, just a question, or this would go to Superintendent Flanagan. How are we going to be able to enforce it? Do we have that kind of equipment?
We would, I'd spoke to the manager early in anticipation of this. We would have to purchase some equipment for the police to have it. We do use one with codes. We would have to get one that's certified, and make sure we have a backup piece of equipment.
And I, if I could just chime in on that, in addition to, we would probably be using or asking additional help from our code, Community Development Department to, to assist in the event that, you know, police is stretched thin, or, and since we have such specific areas where this is going on, we can, we can, we know where we need to be, so to speak.
Does, does this provide a slippery slope for other outdoor venues that may not deal with music? So we have other, you know, athletic stadiums, through some of our institutions, where they could have loud noise. It just seems that we should apply evenly throughout the township, not just because one area has it pinned.
So I hear you. Right now, I'm just looking at this particular resolution, where we're letting people do stuff which is distinct from what the residents have come to expect in that area. We're essentially making a change to our zoning code to some extent. And people, some people are very upset about that. And while I ordinarily think that if you move to the nuisance, you have to accept the fact that there's going to be a nuisance there. In this case, we are allowing a nuisance to expand, and it's affecting people. 7:00 p.m. was the time that the people that we talked to referred to as when their kids started going to bed, generally speaking, which is when they wanted quiet. If we want to, as a board, reevaluate our noise ordinance, and suggest that we should impose a a-weighted decibel limit on other locations, I'm all for that. We actually just looked at our construction ordinance for basically the same reason. It was becoming a nuisance to people, so I'm, I'm happy to do that. But in this instance, I want to address this particular issue.
So, sure. So my other question is, whatever those decibel levels are, you don't necessarily know, this board doesn't necessarily know. You don't know what 50 decibels is, or 100 decibels is, from the property line. If you're just pulling that from another township's ordinance, it may apply, it may not apply. So I... So I am all for outdoor dining, but, pardon me, outdoor dining, and I love the idea of music, but I just think that we need to shore this up. And I just think that we need to apply a noise ordinance of this level when it comes to entertainment, be it athletics, be it music, be it something else, a loudspeaker, something else, it needs to be applied evenly throughout the township.
Well, Sean, then we would have to amend the noise ordinance.
Then we would have to amend the noise ordinance.
Yeah, I would agree with Sean. I think that it needs to be uniform across the township. This can't be just a, you know, one-time thing in one area. I mean, there are plenty instances across the township where you could have another band playing, you know, in a different area.
Yeah, and I should clarify, I'm still waiting for a second. In a second, I'm just going to say we're not going to get a vote on this because nobody has seconded it, but.
I'll second it. I think that, but, I mean, a lot of times you want to kind of push through real quick without saying, there's no discussion on an ancillary motion. I think that it's important that we talk about this.
Okay, well, now we have a second. There's no discussion on ancillary motion, so I am going to call for a vote.
I would like to offer something on this. So under our Code 200-2, Radnor Noise Ordinance, it says that no person shall be, shall play, use, operate any musical instrument, amplifier, et cetera.
But that's only for devices which are not decibel controlled.
Which is, which is not measured or required, so that the sound coming from such machine can be audibly heard at a distance greater than 100 feet from the property or premises wherein such machine or device is located. So in other words, it's already on there. If you can hear it at 100 feet, it's prohibited by the current ordinance in Radnor.
It's not. That only applies to.
Musical instruments, stereos, and other sound-producing devices, 200-2.
Which are not measured and regulated by decibels. So your trombone is not measured and regulated by decibels, but my stereo player, and more importantly, the amp that the band is playing through, has a volume meter that's controlled by decibels.
Right. So my view would be that this covers that amp and the people, the music that's coming.
It doesn't, because they're controlled, your amp is controlled by decibels. It has a volume meter. If you have an amp that just plays at one volume and you have no ability to control it, then that would qualify, but nobody really has that. They all have decibel-controlled amps.
That's not, that's not how I read it. But my, my point is, you're greatly, you're allowing much more sound than this does because you can hear it, it's, you're allowing for 65 decibels at 100 feet from the point source.
63 decibels at 100 feet from a point source. But yes, that's because this does not refer to band amps. This just refers to a limited subset. So we would be putting a different restriction on what is actually controlled by 200-1, which currently only requires that you not make noise which is so harsh or prolonged or unnatural or unusual in their use, time, place, as to occasion physical discomfort or which are injurious to the lives, health, peace, and comfort of the inhabitants of said township or any number thereof.
That would not apply.
I don't, yeah, I don't understand why measured by decibels. This specifically calls out loudspeakers and other amplifiers.
Which are not measured and regulated by decibels.
What does that, what does that mean? Amplifier is not measured and regulated by decibels. It's, it's actually regulated and measured by a pot. It's a potentiometer that allows for greater sign. I don't know what you, why, why would we have this if it doesn't include amplifiers and stereos?
It's a terrible ordinance. I didn't draft it, you didn't draft it.
Rather than argue over decibels, would it be better to limit, you know, the time? Just say after a certain time you can't have outdoor music and only certain days of the week?
That's what I wanted to do initially, and the WBA has told me that that would be crushing. And also, they've, I think correctly pointed out that the overwhelming majority of the restaurants that have live music are doing nothing wrong, they're not bothering anybody. There's one, sometimes two establishments that are drawing the ire of a small group of residents.
I think if we're going to have this for the benefit temporarily of the business community, we shouldn't limit the sound. Just, it's just a difficult thing, it's only a short-term thing for, a short-term for the, for the constituents to live with. And it's for the benefit of the economic well-being of our constituents who will have the businesses there. So I think that on balance, that we should leave the resolution as it is.
Okay. We have violated my maxim, we've been talking about this for a long time. I am going to call the vote, it's an ancillary motion. All in favor of the amendment, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Nay. Motion fails, five to one. Okay, is there any commissioner comment on the unamended resolution?
This, because this affects the Wayne Business District as well as Garrett Hill. I think it's great. I just would like to see outdoor dining, as many know, moving forward. So just one quick question to either the manager and/or the superintendent of police. Have you had any complaints from the residents about noise or drunkenness in Garrett Hill? There any kind of complaints about the outdoor dining?
Yeah, I'm making eye contact with Chris. I know I have not heard any, either of those, none have made it to my inbox or phone.
Excellent. Okay, that's, that's great to hear. And then one more thing, that tent, does it matter if the flaps are down or up? Is that some kind, does one constitute some kind of zoning issue or not?
Well, I won't speak to zoning, but I will speak to COVID generally, is that the Governor's Office has issued direction on at what point does a tent no longer become a tent based on walls being down? And I believe it's two sides. I don't, I don't know if that's accurate or not, but for, for argument's sake, we'll say two sides for now. I think I'm in the ballpark. Between zero and four, I know that, so.
So when it gets cold and it's outside and three of the tents are down, or three of the walls, we'll say four of the flaps are down, there's a little doorway, that won't constitute a tent? Am I correct in that regard?
Well, the reason why I bring it up is more from a capacity standpoint based on the COVID protocols and regulations from the Governor's Office, is that once you take an outdoor tent and you put two sides down, now it's, it's an indoor space and you're limited, your capacity's limited based on the indoor capacity calculations that, that they have. So while we're not actively out-managing the Governor's orders, the complaint, that would generate complaints and things for the Health Department to look into. So any tent that's out there that has walls down, which we understand will be the case as it gets colder, they'll be limited in terms of capacity based on the COVID restrictions. How that impacts zoning, I'll let Kevin speak to that. I'm not 100% sure.
As, as a temporary structure, we wouldn't get involved in the zoning, particularly if it's installed in accordance with the resolution. So it's understood that these are going up, but that the tent sides does play a role.
Is there a maximum number that you're able to put in a tent, or because it's still deemed Does it make sense? Is there a maximum number? So in Garrett Hill, there's that tent that, that there.
It's based off of the size of the tent.
Is there a maximum occupancy?
Yes, there's a calculation based off of the size of the tent.
Okay. That's fine, thanks.
So I guess my other question, I mean, I don't want to give up on Commissioner Larkin's concerns, you know, that the neighbors have expressed. Has the WBA, like, reached out to them at all? Is there any sort of compromise? I mean, you know, I, I understand, we certainly want to support and help our businesses, but we don't want to do it to the detriment of the residents. So is there, have they communicated at all, or there's really no middle ground, or?
So the chief actually put together a meeting on this issue with residents, and it was a pretty well-attended meeting. I thought that it went well. A lot of the residents said, not just that they liked the, the outdoor dining and the music, but they liked being able to hear the music from their homes. There was a group of, a smaller number of residents who had said that they, they were really disturbed by it, and it made it difficult to put their kids to bed, and they were frustrated by that, and also they just didn't want to hear the music, it wasn't their, their cup of tea. We had come up with what I thought was a fairly workable solution. The owner of the offending restaurant had volunteered his or her contact information to the residents and said, please, if there's ever an issue, get in touch with me. The residents, who eventually did reach out to that owner, then complained that they were able to hear the band members saying, we've been told that we need to turn our music down, we're going to turn it up. And of course, I don't know whether they really did or not, but that was really offensive.
Rock and roll.
I frankly think what happened was they said, we're going to turn it up! And then they quietly turned their amps down, because that's kind of what rock and roll bands do, when you're 55 years old and you're actually a CPA in real life. Other residents have said that they don't feel like they should be responsible for calling the, calling the owner of the restaurant every single time it gets loud. He's the one who's breaking our laws, why should we have to police that? You should send out the cops and you should shut them down. They just don't understand, why is there no mechanism in order to make this stop happening going forward? And I get that, there really isn't a great mechanism. We can issue citations, and that's just about it. There's, unless we shut them down altogether, there's no great mechanism to make it stop. And we don't have that hammer right now without a whole lot of enforcement actions that we, frankly, are not going to do.
So would it be, would it be, is there a way to establish set hours without worrying about the decibels? That, you know, the live music is fine until, you know, 10, and then you, then you can keep your, you know, bar open with the music off or low. I mean, you know, 7 is early, it's not even the dinner hour. So the idea that residents can't put their kids to bed, I, I feel for that. We have a party house in our neighborhood that generates the same kind of complaints and, but it's not the dinner hour yet. So shutting off the music at 7 means, you know, you're just allowing them happy hour bands, and that just, it's not going to help the businesses. So if there was an hour that we could agree upon, which was reasonable, or days of the week that you can play louder, longer, we might be able to help compromise.
I think the residents would be happy to hear a 10:00 p.m. shut-off. I think they would be happy to hear, like, Friday, Saturday-only rule, but the residents are really complaining about the inability to put kids to bed. They want this over at 7 o'clock. They don't want to be able to hear it in their homes at all. I don't think they're going to be satisfied, they'll just be sort of incrementally less upset.
So I would equate this to something similar to a light situation. No, I mean, noise and light are, they're similar things.
It is, it is similar.
No, it's a, it's a nuisance. You know, it may be great that it's off at 7, but maybe someone works a different shift. That's, that's one of the, that's one of the issues. It could get nice out and you want to have your windows open, and you can't have your windows open because there's loud music. So I feel for the neighbors. I understand that the restaurants, they want to have live music, and live music is great. It's wonderful. But if it's loud, if it's going past their property line and becoming a nuisance, you know, the families are the ones that have the most rights here. It's a nuisance, it's annoying, and it's a quality-of-life issue. It's a quality-of-life issue for a family, and a mom or dad with a small kid. So, yeah, I think 7 is good, a happy hour band is good, maybe 8. I don't want to put an arbitrary decibel level that we don't know. It should be that the sound should not leave the property line, or should be heard on someone else's property, and go from there. But I think that we need to focus on the quality-of-life issue first and foremost, and that's with the, that goes down to the residents.
One question, before this was allowed to go on outside due to COVID, was there, is this a complaint even when it was inside the building as well?
Not that reached me. The areas that we're talking about did not have existing bands operating. Not that they didn't have one in it once in a blue moon, but there's no specific routine that we're seeing now. And Mr. Kanchansky could also confirm that some of the places that had them out in the parking lots would normally not be permitted, but due to the special ordinance, it's allowed for some new features to help, obviously, the businesses stay afloat due to their occupancy restrictions. So I hope that answers your question. It wouldn't normally be going on without the pandemic and the special ordinance enacted by the township.
But some of the bars or, some of the restaurants do regularly have bands long before we had the outdoor, and presumably it wasn't an issue that would, that could be heard by the neighbors that they complained, when it was inside.
Yes, so inside, we occasionally had problems, and we would deal with them on those individual bases, but what we're talking about now is strictly people outside in, you know, parking lot areas having bands or reproducing music through some type of electronic means.
And, and it's actually more often, and more people, or it's different than it was before. Understood.
I guess my final comment on this is that we are under, you know, very special circumstances. You know, a nuisance like this is unusual. I don't think this township would allow it to go on if we weren't under a pandemic and trying to help out some businesses. We are going to see lots of things move indoors because of the weather, and, you know, hopefully we don't always live like this, and then this will go away. So I know that's not a great consolation to the residents who are hearing it, but, you know, we are talking about a temporary situation. Difficult to balance the interest, I get it, but the fact that, I, I believe that there is hope and an end in sight at some point, and I do think that the, the winter months are going to end this, the ability for these bars and restaurants to have this kind of entertainment anyway. So, yeah, it's, it's a hard call, but I'm hesitant to shut things down so early for a business that's probably really struggling.
Is there any additional commissioner comment?
When it gets, when it gets to be really cold, nobody's going to want to be out there anyway. This ends March of 2021, March 31, 2021. So are they still going to, even if it's below freezing or it's 20 degrees, they're still going to have outdoor bands, you think? Or they curtail it at that point?
I mean, they're putting up tents and heaters all over the place. I don't know if the bands are going to want to play in there, but.
So, so they will have, they'll be under the tent with, with, with the open wall, and then heaters in there, so they'll be fine to play in 32 degrees, I guess.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Is there any additional commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment?
The only, the only thing, just really quickly to add to that is, at the same time, there's a lot of Radnor residents who are enjoying going to these restaurants and enjoying the music and dining out and helping the businesses too. So we're, we're dealing with both ends of the complaint, but there, there are two ends of it. I think there's a lot of residents that enjoy these, these, these restaurants and the atmosphere it's creating, and what was accurately described as a pretty crazy time, an unprecedented time, and hopefully a temporary time. So just one more thing to keep in mind.
Just a point of order, we're talking about music, this is not on this ordinance, correct? We're just talking about outdoor dining, correct, extending the outdoor dining?
Yeah, we, we did not amend it, so we're just talking about outdoor dining.
So we're just talking about something, I mean, instead of talking about it now, I know it's over, bring something back, and I think we can work with it, but let's just focus on what's on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Is there any additional staff comment? Is there any public comment? Hearing none, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes six to zero. Item 3E, Resolution Number 2020-120, amending the township's engagement with Flam Walton and Heimbach PC, who serve as the township's business tax solicitor. Mr. Tate? as the township's business tax solicitor. Uh, Mr. Tate, is that you?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes. Um, tonight before you is a resolution to, um, renew and reengage the Flan, the, the firm of Flan Walton Heimbach, Heimbach, and in particular their principal attorney Jenny, Jenny Brown in servicing the township for the Act 511 legal services. Um, last time this came before the board was, uh, four years ago, uh, for a renewal and adjustment in rate and in the professional fees. Uh, I will say this is a highly specialized service. Um, it's actually a very niche service. There are a number of attorneys who specialize in servicing municipalities for this type of tax. Um, there's roughly 10% of the municipalities across the state who have this tax in place. Um, quite a few of them I have met at conferences over the years, um, where 30 to 40 or so municipalities are represented. Uh, and there are, there's a small handful, and I will say without offending any of them, that Jenny is, is recognized as one of the leaders in this area of taxation. She serviced the township for many years with an unblemished record, uh, highly professional, has, uh, served us on many cases, and, uh, her unique expertise, not only in the interpretation, but in the application of the law, uh, has served Radnor very well over the years. So, um, we're looking to honor her, uh, this engagement and renew, uh, this relationship, uh, for, at the rates specified.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. I will so move. Is there a second? Is there any commissioner comment?
Uh, I'll make a comment for my colleague, Commissioner Abel, who's not able to attend this evening. He's, uh, he's in the midst of a move, uh, bought a new house, sold one, so he's, he's not here tonight. But one of the items that he had, and he made clear to me is, is concerned that this was not put out to bid. And professional services, I recognize, are not required to be, uh, bid. Nonetheless, we should, notwithstanding the paucity of special out, people who have specialized in this area, we should put it out to bid because across the state, there's plenty of, there's plenty of people who do this. So why was this not put out to bid?
Thanks, Commissioner. Initially, we were not seeking, um, to make a change in the, in the relationship. Um, the, the others who work in this field, um, and there are probably four or five who service the southeastern Pennsylvania area, Philadelphia, and as far as Lehigh County and out towards the center of the state, um, they're well-known, very respected in their, in their field. One works directly for a city, so they're unable to work as a contracted professional. Another one is, uh, serves as the township's hearing officer. So it would be a conflict of interest for that person to serve also as the Act 511 solicitor. Um, there's two others, and, uh, I know they have a full caseload in their respective municipalities, and, and there's Jenny. Um, I'm sure there are others out there, uh, but our intention initially was not seeking a change in our professional service, um, rather to renew the engagement, the existing engagement at a rate that, uh, by comparison is competitive with other municipalities. Some are a little below, some a little bit above. Um, but, um, it's, we thought it was a fair, uh, a fair, a fair fee structure for Radnor Township. Uh, Radnor is among 260 municipalities that collect this tax, and, uh, looking back over the past 10 years, we are consistently in the top three, maybe four in terms of number of accounts and revenue collected. Uh, so we, the, having the services of someone who is highly specialized with an expertise in this area is what we were seeking. Um, Jenny has served us, served us very well in that role. So that's, that's, I guess that's why we did not go out for RFP at this time.
And also procedurally, I think that, I mean, I think this is what you were saying, but procedurally, they just told us that they were changing their fee schedule and we're kind of deciding in the first instance, are we going to accept that? If the answer is no, then we might choose to go out to bid. We might choose a different professional, but this is kind of a unilateral move by them. If we do not accept this fee schedule, they will not be our tax solicitor anymore.
That is correct. And the fee schedule is, again, municipal rates. Um, these are below what the firms, uh, conventional rates are for services.
Mr. Tate?
And, and just, um, so, um, how long have they been, how long have they been with us?
Uh, the firm has been, Flan Walton has been with us, uh, since 2013. Uh, prior to that, Jenny was with, uh, a predecessor firm. Um, so collectively for the township, she's served us for, for many years, um, uh, but with, with two different firms.
So she's very well-versed in all of our, the intricacies of our ordinances and the collection, and I know that she's working closely with us on the amusement tax, um, that we'll be bringing back at some point, and then certainly the addition of the Act 511, um, position. So somebody to work on that and, and work with her to even expand, correct, on our collections with that?
That's correct. Um, and also we have rewritten our regulations surrounding the business privilege and mercantile taxes, um, three different times in the past eight years. Again, updating, um, making small changes based on case law. Uh, Jenny has certainly been, uh, on the cutting edge and ahead of the curve to make sure that we're always out in front of how the case law evolves and how it can affect the application of these business taxes.
So I don't have an issue with Ms. Brown. I think she's done great work. Uh, I think everyone here can speak to that. My issue is, I just, I have some issues, I guess, a little bit with the process. Um, I do echo what Commissioner Booker said. Um, when it comes to, uh, you know, our, our outside vendors, um, we should, uh, go out to bid. Uh, I think it's, uh, best practice. It's something good. Now, with that being said, um, how much, what's the total cost per year, um, that she or her firm does? Cause if it's an extreme amount, and I'm, I know it's not a hundred thousand dollars, but if it's a hundred thousand dollars, absolutely, we should be going out to bid and we should be, um, you know, finding someone where we can balance, having great legal representation as well as making it affordable, uh, to the residents. So with that said, Mr. Tate.
Sean, do you mean net or gross?
Oh.
Because they.
Well, she gets just.
Are a profit center for us.
She just gets fee, so I.
Yeah.
But she goes after, uh, delinquent tanks, tax accounts for us as well, which means that she generates revenue for the township. She doesn't get a commission in the sense that some of the other people who participate in that process do, but she, she makes money for the township.
So over the last, I, I would say four years since this was re-upped, but over the last couple of years, how much do we pay her and how much does she bring in? Mr. Tate, do you have that, do you know those numbers? And they could be ballpark off the top of your head.
I was, I was just about to look it up. Um, we've been in the 40,000.
No.
50,000. I know this year's been extremely light.
Mm-hmm.
And last year was, no, it just, I, I'm looking at, uh, our expense budget here for Act 511 legal services in 2017. It was, uh, 21,000. 2018, it was 19,000. 2019, it was 18,000. This year, we're at about 14 or 15,000.
Now, that's what we've, that's what we've paid in legal fees to her?
That's, that's the budget, but.
No, those are actual expenses.
That's what we've, that's what we've written a check as the expense, and then how much has she brought in because of that?
Audit proceeds?
Yes.
Well, if you're going to do that, you also have to offset it by the amounts.
Rich, I, I appreciate.
Because it's not just proceeds.
I know, I know. Let me just ask my, let me just get my question.
Yeah, so over the same period of time, uh, the annual amounts fluctuate from a few thousand to hundreds of thousands, but the gross audit proceeds over that period of time is about 631,000.
Okay.
Um, those are just the audit proceeds. What, what's not captured in those numbers is if, uh, company X is out of compliance, there is an audit proceed from the audit, and then there's, uh, the recurring revenue of them being in compliance going forward. So, um.
Okay, but our to, okay, but our total, um, expense to her, we've, we'll write a, a yearly check, obviously. It'll be spread out throughout the year, 21,000, 19,000, 18,000, and 14,000, give or take.
Yeah, I mean, the problem with the, the specific numbers is that, you know, those are based on the audits that were generated during those time periods. There could be a, a labor-intensive audit that drives that number up, or there could be run-of-the-mill simpler audits that aren't challenged legally that require very little legal.
No, no, that's fine. I just want to make sure that we're not in the hundreds of thousands and there's a, a no-bid contract essentially given out.
Yeah, I mean, my, my response to that would be is if we're ever in the hundreds of thousands on legal or audit expense, the proceeds are going to be that much higher on the, the outcome of the audit.
Sure. A couple of years ago, we were about 300,000 on our solicitor fees. So I just want to make sure that this is, uh, a lot less, which it is. So, uh, uh, again, um, now knowing what I know, it's fine. I'll, I'll, I will vote, um, to, um, to accept these fees, but I think in general it is best, best practice to, uh, to, to go out to bid for some of these things.
And, and with regard to that, I, I would, I wholeheartedly agree, except in this particular case, uh, to, to President Larkin's point, um, they initiated this through a request and a fee change. We are not out actively looking for an Act 511 solicitor. If we're ever in the position where Jenny retires, or if we're, we're starting from scratch, I think that, that would absolutely be the course of action. But in this particular case, we have the foremost expert on our team, uh, and, and she serves Radnor, uh, serves Radnor well, and.
And lives in Radnor.
She lives in, yeah, she lives in Radnor. Um, so she's on our, it's best for Radnor to keep her on our team.
Well, two things though. You didn't talk about the amount we paid out on audit as well. We, last year, I remember we had a big payment to one of the companies. Um, and also Jenny here is requesting a 25% pay increase, right? So that's the issue, is that hourly rate's going from 200 to 250. So in light of that, we ought to bid it out to see if that for sure is, is what we want to do because it's going to be a lot more, right? If she was reducing the price, okay, but that's not what it is. This is a big increase. So 25% increase is a big increase.
I think the counter argument might have been the other fee was artificially low.
Can, when was the last time we had a pay increase for her?
The last pay increase was in 2016.
Is there any additional commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? Hearing none, I will call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes five to one. Moving on to item three F, resolution number 2020 dash 116, authorization to award contract B dash 20 dash 008 tree removal, pruning, and stump grinding in the amount of 69,999 dollars. I will so move. Is there a second? Is there any commissioner comment? Hearing none, is there any staff comment? Hearing none, is there any public comment? I will call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Uh, moving on to item three G, resolution number 2020 dash 117, adopting the updated emergency management plan. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any commissioner comment?
The only comment is I, I haven't reviewed this. I'm, I don't know, I'm not an expert on emergency plans for the township. I haven't reviewed this in any length, and, uh, I don't feel comfortable saying that I give it my imprimatur by approving this, so I'm going to abstain, uh, on, on this. I, if we have the chance to go through it and, and, and meet on it and go through its elements, maybe I'd be different, but just to put this in front of me in a couple of days' notice, I, I don't feel comfortable approving it.
Can I just ask, um, the, the engineer, uh, we have a lot of, uh, engineering contracts and, um, design. Is this going to get done? What's, what do we expect the cost to be? Uh, this is unbudgeted because it's an emergency. How much of an emergen, it's not an emergency?
I think, I think we're on resolution 2020 117 still, yes?
2017?
Emergency management plan.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
So I just have a question. To Commissioner Booker's point, this is, you know, fairly extensive, and I'm just wondering, what were the changes? Cause I see it was originally adopted in 2003. Are they substantive changes? Is it really, so in the ordinance, I see it specifically denotes who is, you know, responsible. Um, I'm just wondering, what, what were some of the changes that were made since we don't have like a red line version?
Commissioners, Sergeant Gluck and Steve G. and Christopher, our emergency management team walk up the podium to answer the specificity. Um, this was a two-year goal to redo and update our, um, management numbers, contacts, and other things. And then now that they're up there, I will turn it over to them because they did the work.
Great. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Commissioners. Sergeant Chris Gluck is the chief, as mentioned. The state requires an emergency management basic plan be put in place and that it be reviewed every two years. This has not been done since 2003. I've been the emergency management coordinator since April of 2019. I made it a point to update everything, to make it up to par and to modernize the system itself. What you have in front of you is a copy of the basic plan, which is required by the state. Um, the plan is an outline using the, uh, incident command system, which is put on by FEMA, PEMA, and Delaware County as well as municipalities. Basically, it's just an outline, an understanding of how, if we have a disaster, what the emergency operations center would do, and each person's position and explanation of how they would handle their position. Um, it is not specific. Um, there is, uh, mission-specific things that we get into when we get into a specific kind of disaster, but this just gives us an outline and a layout as to how we would handle all hazards if we come across something.
Um, and Sergeant Gluck, so you, I mean, it's not like you sat by yourself and came up with this. Yeah, I mean, you worked with collaboratively with various groups and whatnot.
So basically what happens is you're, you have a general outline. You have to specify certain things about your community and your municipality. So we took the information that we have and we put it into this and we driven it towards Radnor Township and the hazards that we have, which majority are storm-related and flood-related. Uh, but we also have aspects of terrorism response and other things that we do not release to the public because of mission-specific information, as well as resource information, which includes your information for contacts, uh, other folks we would contact in specific types of emergencies.
Is there anything about this that you, um, you know, are, feels a particular, um, revision or up, you know, and a particular update to what was in 2003? I just, you know, trying to understand, um.
Sure. So the, the state provides you the template of how they would like it done now. Back in 2003, it was really haphazard and just said you needed a plan to be put in place. And I have a copy of it. It's only a few pages and it basically says we're going to put a plan in place. So there really wasn't much done with it back in 2003. Um, but it, it does give a very, very, very simplified outline of how we would respond, whereas now we have to have this layout and understanding of everything that needs to take place and who would do what position and what their jobs would entail when we do have a disaster. So it is, it's more updated and it's, it's better laid out.
Okay.
Basically, that's it. And it's, it's not something that we need to sit down and hash out or anything like that. The plan needs to be in place, uh, and has to be reviewed every two years.
And Commissioner, Commissioner Borowski, if I could just add that the township solicitor, John Rice, reviewed this and created the resolution, just updating it. So we had our attorney take a look at it, and, and I hate using the word boilerplate, but as Sergeant Gluck meant, the template is true for all the local communities. It just gets bigger or smaller, respective to size of the general nature, and of course. And of course, if a commissioner would like to stop and see it in person, we'd be happy to work with them through Mr. White's office.
Thank you. I appreciate your hard work on this. Thank you.
Sergeant Gluck, so, go ahead. So, what we have before us is really just laying out basic chain of command and then the operations underneath in terms of the plug-and-play that you're talking about, correct? And there's not substantial, to Commissioner Borowski's questions, there's not substantial edits and updates with regards to responsibilities, chain of command, other things that are in here? This is the basic state template that's required and this is just the population. The detail would be in another plan per incident, correct?
Yes, sir. Absolutely correct.
Okay. So, the reason that I ask that is that in just quickly reviewing it, and I won't get into a lot of detail, but having to have studied this in order to pass Fire 1, there was an awful lot that went on chain of command and operations and stuff like that. And in reviewing this, this is, again, for a second time, and understand that this was just an update, this really is just a basic template. It doesn't get into a lot in terms of specis, specis, spef, specificity. Yeah, that word. Thank you. In terms of, in terms of who's doing what. So, it is pretty basic in terms of the coverage across the township, coordination with Delaware County, and then who's responsible for things like oil spills, fires, emergency response-type stuff. So, it's pretty basic in my estimation.
So, Chief, I'm happy you said the word boilerplate because I was going to say cookie cutter and I don't want that to be offensive. But that being said, how much is of this was a boilerplate or from the state? And how much did Radnor, you guys, put in or is it, is there a mix of both or?
So, I would say that the majority of it was template-based.
Was template-based.
The secondary aspect to it, which is not part of that, is the resource manual, which required extensive updating and planning and contact information. So, the basic plan is what we need to go through tonight and that is the template that was majorly just filled out by me to fill in the blanks of what needs to be done.
Okay. One more question, Sergeant. I hope one more question and I'll have a follow-up. If there's something that pops up and you're like, ah, maybe we should change this or we should edit it, does it need to come back to the board? Can you do it yourself? Is it done internally?
What I can do is I can review what changes need to be made and I can make them. There is a list on there in one of the pages to note that a change has been made, to document the date and time and who did it.
Does it need to come to the board or you guys just do it internally?
I don't believe so.
I mean, if it's a minor change for some reason or?
Right. But regardless, it needs to be reviewed every two years, which I can do. I don't believe it needs to come before the board again.
Okay. And you put the plan together. We have the chief of police here. You're okay with it? It sounds good? It keeps?
Very confident in the plan. It's a very basic understanding of how we do an emergency operations center and how we would respond to all hazards.
Okay. And Chief, you're confident with this as well?
They did an excellent job, sir, yes.
Then I'll refer to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
You've asked each, go ahead, Moore.
I was just going to thank you because I know we're saying it's boilerplate and template, but I know what it takes, the attention to detail, to kind of make sure that you're compliant and I appreciate the work. It looks good and thanks for doing it.
Much appreciated.
You've asked each commissioner to individually sign the promulgation?
Yes.
We are missing one commissioner today, obviously, and it sounds like there's going to be at least one commissioner who votes nay on this today. And I'm assuming will not be excited to sign the promulgation. Will we have an issue if you get, because you couldn't get fewer than four signatures? Will that be a problem for you?
I don't believe so. I think we need to have everybody sign it in general if it passes. It's a plan that protects the township.
Will there be an issue if you only get four?
I'll do what I can do.
Okay.
Do the best I can, sir.
I mean, you're the police officer. If you want to coerce people to sign, nobody here can stop you, but I'm not going to do it.
Well, you mentioned something that's a good point. Protects the township or does it impose any liability on the Board of Commissioners directly for approving the plan? And why wouldn't the township manager be the one responsible for approving this plan? For instance, we don't approve any police plans like use of lethal force or anything like that. We don't approve plans. We're politicians. We are not experts on emergency management operations. So, where specifically does it say that we have to sign off on this plan? And why wouldn't it be the administration that does that rather than the politicians?
So, basically, you're signing off on the fact that you have agreed with the state that you have a plan in place? That you have one in general that has to be in place?
Well, if that's the case, then I would ask that you bring and go through the elements of the board, with the board, so we're all clear on what the boilerplate and what this cookie cutter plan is that has no real substance. Let's go through it with the board so we're all aware of what that is. Again, I haven't reviewed this. I'm not an expert in it and I'm not going to sign off on this without knowing exactly what it is. And again, I would review, I would refer to the township manager to sign off on this.
If you refer to Section I on page one, it's the purpose and scope and it can explain that. Purposes of this plan is to be prescribed to those activities to be taken by the municipal government and other community officials to protect the lives and property of citizens in the event of a natural or human cause, including terrorism, emergency, or disaster to satisfy the requirements of the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Services Code, 35 PACS, Section 7101, to have a disaster emergency plan for the municipality. Sorry. The plan consists of a basic plan, which describes principles and doctrines, a notification and resource manual, which I also have, which is not for public view due to specific information, which provides listings and meanings of contacting local in need of resources in a series of functional checklists, which provide detail for the accomplishment of the specifics of the operation. So, basically, you're just signing off.
The basic is that we're signing off and saying that we have a plan or at least we've at least seen a plan in place. They're not asking for you to be an expert in all of these areas. That's why we have these gentlemen. That's why we have, you know, a fire department. That's why we have other, in terms of emergency response, in terms of the detail. They're just asking that as a board, we sign and acknowledge that we have a plan in place.
As a lawyer, what I would say is that I read it differently. This says, "We are approving the detail for the accomplishment of the specifics of the operation." One, my question is, where in this act does it require that this board, Rich Booker, as commissioner, sign and approve this? I haven't seen that. I know what the plan is intended to do. And two, if this is boilerplate, then what are the specifics of the operation? That is, it's not boilerplate if it's specifics of an operation, so.
There's not specifics of an operation in the actual document. It lays out the skeleton of how the EOM would end up functioning and what the various departments in the EOM would be. Sergeant, first off, I'm sorry I called you an officer before. Sergeant, you can't read the whole thing to us today. That's going to take far too much time. I don't get the sense that we're all going to agree on this. I'm going to suggest, Rich, you've already said you want to abstain. I assume you're not going to be signing, so. Unless there's any additional commissioner comments, why don't we ask staff for comment and then keep moving? Is there any additional commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. We have...
Abstain.
Five, four, one, absent, one, abstention. Sergeant, thank you very much. We will get this signed for you guys at the end of the meeting. We'll just pick the absent spot. We can sign it one after another while distanced.
Appreciate it.
Moving on to item H, 3H. Resolution number 2020-118, authorizing the award of the contract for the engineering and design of the Brookside Avenue Storm Sewer Replacement to Carroll Engineering Corporation, the amount of $20,106. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any commissioner comment?
Just that, and, well, he was here. Oh, Mr. Norsini's here. Thank you. I'm sure that you'll lead us in, just that this is a storm sewer right here on Brookside that has collapsed. It is causing an northern amount of flooding on a property that backs up to Eithin Creek. This is not meant to mediate and completely relieve that property of flooding. We know that flooding will continue in that area, on that creek, as all properties that border Eithin Creek do. What this is meant to do is fulfill the obligation of the township in terms of that specific storm sewer and the collapse that happened there, which is also causing extraordinary flooding during those times on a response road, namely Brookside Avenue, which our police department needs to access regularly.
You said it well, Commissioner. So, yes, this is, truly, it's an infrastructure project. We have a failed section of infrastructure that goes through the property. It's causing issues for the resident and our pipe is separated and broken. Again, the commissioner's right. The property is in the floodplain. There will be some, you know, a slight improvement just because of the fact that the pipes work, but that's not the genesis of the project. The fact is, we have storm sewer that goes through a property in an easement and that storm sewer has failed or is failing. And this proposal is to do the survey, design, GP4 permit with DEP, come up with the bidding specs and documents for that project.
Any idea what the cost of the project will be after the engineering?
That's part of the engineering proposal, Commissioner, so they had to give us an estimated probable cost of construction with that.
Well, but just what do you think it's going to be between what and what?
More than $100,000, but I don't, I didn't, I need to see a rough design to see just how deep we're getting in, no pun intended, because we are actually...
We're going to be in deep, I can tell.
But we're putting a few more inlets in on Brookside to try to help alleviate some of the issues the commissioner brought up. So, once that design is done, we will be back to this, to the Board of Commissioners to ask for permission to receive bids. And at that time, I can give you a much better cost estimate. I haven't priced it out because I don't know what the design is.
But it's more than $100,000, you think, for a few inlets, pipe?
The pipe, there's actually a pretty long pipe run that goes through the property and we're going to have to replace inlets and piping in the street. So, that's easy to say it's a six-figure project. I just don't know where.
But it's not a million-dollar project.
Yeah. But it's like trying to tell you what a car is going to cost when you didn't tell me what kind of car you're buying. So, I need to get some of that design done.
Hundred, $150,000, something like that.
For the car? No, for the pipe. It's going to be, I really need to see the design before I comment on that.
Is there any additional commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes six to zero. Moving on to item 3I. Resolution number 2020-119, authorizing the award of the contract for the engineering and design of the Odoratio Park and Cowan Park Basketball Courts and related items to Carroll Engineering Corporation in the amount of $27,440 to be paid from 2019 bond funds. I will so move. Is there a second? Is there any commissioner comment?
This project was part of that bond, was it enumerated project on the bond list?
Yes, sir, it was.
Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes six to zero. Item four, reports of standing committees of the board. Are there any reports? Hearing none, I will move to new business. I have one item of new business to pass on to the board. I'm seeking a sense of the board to give direction to Bill on next steps with respect to the tent, which is relevant to Resolution 3D that we previously passed. Our, our contract with the tenant company is set to expire in advance of the March 31st, 2021 deadline, that we have now moved this on. The WBA has already undertaken efforts to fundraise in order to defray some of the costs that we will have in extending that contract. Obviously, they're not going to know the full number of dollars that they are able to fundraise. Is it the sense of the board that we should continue the tent in operation moving forward at a cost of, Bill, what is our maximum outlay here?
Well, the tent runs with the tent itself, the cleaning company, and the police detail, along with the porta potty, is running about $20,000 a month. We have pulled back in the police detail to try to defray some of those costs, but that's really not one of the more significant line items. I mean, it, so, I mean, that's the amount. And the WBA has already initiated, as you referenced, a GoFundMe fundraising campaign. They set a goal of $50,000. And that's only a couple of days underway, but with any luck, that'll be a very successful campaign and they will be able to defray most, if not even more of the cost.
But our downside risk here is $20,000 a month, assuming that nobody wants to pledge to GoFundMe or the money just wanders off or something.
Well...
Hopefully, the money won't just wander off. I hope not.
I hope not, too. It's not my money, though. I can't safeguard it.
Yeah, I mean, the WBA has already given the township $8,000 to defray the costs up to this point. I would suspect that if the GoFundMe campaign is not successful, they would be willing to contribute some. I don't know what the amount is. I won't put them on the spot or obligate them tonight, but that would be the discussion. But there's no reason to believe that that won't be successful, honestly. I think that the WBA will be successful. They're very excited about it.
Yeah, and I'm making light of this, but in reality, the WBA has been a very active partner in everything having to do with the tent. So, I shouldn't make fun of them or make light of that process. Is there any commissioner who, having heard the numbers that we're talking about, would like not to approve the tent?
Yeah, so, I have a question. This is a buy versus rent situation. Of that $20,000 a month, how much is going there for the rental of the tent?
The tent itself is going at about...
$4,500. And how much would they, and we've rented it for how many months?
We've had it for five months. It's set to expire at the end of this month, so in a week.
So, we've spent over $20,000 on it, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. And how much would it be to buy a tent of that size? My guess would be less than $20,000. Shouldn't we be looking at buying it and then always having something and being able to put it up in different events or in this circumstance? But pay $4,500 a month for it? I mean, there's got to be a way where we could buy something for that amount. I mean, what do they cost?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, is there anything in addition to the $4,500 that we're getting from the rental company? Like if it breaks or if one of the sides doesn't work? Like, do they come out and maintain it and fix it so that our staff doesn't have to do that?
Well, absolutely. I mean, under the rental, they are 100% responsible for the installation, the eventual takedown, as well as, you know, if you've been to it, it's anchored into the asphalt with anchors and, you know, weighted down at each of the poles. And at the same time, they're providing us with, that number includes the tables, the chairs, the lights. So, it's the whole tent, the physical infrastructure of the tent.
And what about liability?
I don't have a cost on buying it. Honestly, when we started this venture, I wasn't sure we'd be here at the end of October, considering something out for multiple months beyond where we're at. But even if we bought a tent of this magnitude, I would have to find out if we've got staff that are capable or trained in putting it up, taking it down, and maintaining it as you would, as you would need to.
I mean, I mean, these tents pop up and they come down and there are crews that can do them, you know, put them up or put them down in a couple of hours' time. I just think that in the days of COVID and the days that this is, as we stated at the past meetings, that this is probably not going to be going away anytime soon, that we need to, if we're going to do this, and I think it's great that we do it and it's great that we help out our businesses and it's a place for the community to go, that we need to balance literally a budget, which I don't know if that's going to happen, and weigh all costs associated, buying versus renting and having something. Yeah, I get that it's good to rent, but at this point now, if this goes, and this is going till March, we've said, we've extended outdoor dining to March. So, it's October. So, November, December, January, February, March. That's another five months. So, that's another 20, you know, 20-plus grand. So, that would have been 40. So that's another 20, you know, 20-plus grand, so that would have been 40. I think that before I would agree to say rent, I think that you need to do an analysis if it makes sense to buy it.
Well, we need, we need a tent.
Can I ask questions around liability, Mr. White? Suppose the tent snaps on two sides, breaks somebody's neck up there, injures several people. Is the tent company liable for that under the agreement that we have with them?
Yeah, they will share liability, but the
And then, of course, would the township, by owning it, then have the liability if something were to go wrong?
If we owned, installed, and maintained it, the liability would be entirely on us if, as it is now, there'd be shared liability.
Okay.
I mean, it is on township land. We will not, we are not, we are not without liability, but as it is
I understand.
If there's a failure with the tent, they are liable.
Those are the costs that you need to weigh into, buying versus renting. What is it to buy and what is it to rent?
Well, you can add storage to that, right? Because there is a very large
Sure. Damien, there's, it goes back and forth. I get it. There's advantages and disadvantages to owning versus renting, leasing versus buying, when people change cars or buy cars. They need to figure that stuff out. All I'm saying is that, as a steward of the township's money, I think that the exercise of what's going to happen is important. I don't want to look at every worst-case scenario of it falling or snapping. That's not what we're here to do. We're here to steward the township's money and to do an analysis and
Commissioner, if I might add
I have a question about that. I'm not, you know, I don't think it's a bad idea to look into what it would cost to buy, but that, having seen it, I also wonder if we would have space to store that, you know? So when you are looking at it, please, you know, provide us with all those considerations. But I don't think it's a bad idea to see what it is. I also, having just dined at a outdoor table in Wayne, you know, the, when the tent idea was first floated, I was not, I didn't jump at it because of, I thought it would turn into a drinking and party tent. I think it kind of has, and people leave that tent without a mask on, walking up and down North Wayne Avenue next to diners who are obviously without masks as they're sitting and eating. So, you know, how long will we want to have a gathering place that involves alcohol, kind of sponsored by the township? I do question that. So if you're talking about sense of the board, you know, I would like to know what the, perhaps what the police are seeing, what others are seeing, as how people are behaving at the tent, when the night gets late and the music gets loud and the drinks are flowing.
Well, we already voted to have the tent, right?
No, we voted to extend the
No, we voted for outdoor dining.
You voted to extend.
Let me suggest this. The tent is on township property right now, is it not?
Yes, it is.
Would you get jammed up if we wait until the next executive session to discuss this, which would give you some time to look at the, at the cost of purchase and the various benefits and costs?
Well, yes. The tent's scheduled to come down on Saturday. The other, the other point of clarification is, as of now, the WBA's request is for two months, so we're not talking about going all the way through the end of March with the tent at this point. If we were to entertain the two months, that would give us more than enough time, or if the board just wanted to do one month tonight, that would give us more than enough time to evaluate the cost-rent proposal. And, I mean, the other big factor here is, is what's going to happen with the weather. We're not sure. If it's a mild winter, I think the tent would be very successful. If it's a cold winter, without walls, it's, it's not going to stay warm, so I'm not sure. And that's why it maybe makes sense not to go beyond December, is if it's too cold, then it's probably not going to be a very popular place to be. But if the board would be, would consider one month for now or entertain the WBA's request for two months, then we can answer a lot of these questions and decide where to go from there.
Why don't we do one month for now and ask Bill to give us his opinion after he's had a chance to do some research on the offerings from people, and we can reevaluate at the end of that month whether we want to re-up or purchase? Because while we will not save money if we purchase the tent with the intent of using it for just one month, I have a sneaking suspicion that this tent is going to be requested at some point in the future regardless of whether or not COVID continues to be an issue. So we might want to end up having that. We can extend for one month and then hear what you have to say. Any objections?
No, one month.
Yeah, one month.
Well, I would say that we, there's no need to revisit this. We need a tent. I don't think it's practical for us to own, set up, take down, store tents, and accept the liability. For something like this, it's always best to outsource it. So I don't, I don't need month-to-month on this, but, you know, so I would approve using the tent as much as we need it through, through March.
I agree with Commissioner Booker.
I think that's where we're going to splash out ultimately, but I don't object to seeing what it would cost to purchase. Is there any old business? Or is there any other new business? I guess they kind of bleed together.
Oh, I have old business.
I have one quick old business question.
Old business as well.
Ladies first. Lisa, you're in charge.
What? Ladies first. Thank you, Commissioner Larkin. So I just wanted to
Next time it's left to the dealer.
What's that?
Next time it's left to the dealer.
So I just wanted to first update the board briefly. Several months ago, we heard from residents, and this board approved a downstream study around the Earl's Lake Dam, and I don't know if you guys have heard peripherally or read my newsletter, but the, the DEP issued an emergency order, and the lake was actually dewatered, which means it was drained. It is no longer. It's kind of sad. No sadder than the turtles that were running around there with no water, but, and they are in the process of breaching the dam. It was considered, I think, Mr. Norsini, one of the most dangerous dams or highest failure rate dam or something in the state, so
Yes, it was a high priority to be removed.
Yeah, so, so that has happened, and I just wanted to acknowledge and thank, first of all, Mr. Norsini for his work and his effort around this. We have many, several residents that live right below the dam, right next to the dam, who have, Mr. Norsini has gone above and beyond and bent over backwards to support them, assist them, provide information, serve as a liaison with DEP, which is not an easy thing, and, you know, I really just wanted to thank him, as well as Mr. White. Mr. White has been very participatory, helped out, numerous Zoom calls, you know, trying to work with the residents, reassure them. It's been a very, you know, upsetting process for many who live right near there, as well as Mr. Rice, who has been supportive and helpful in communicating with Green Country Village, which is the actual owner of the dam, and I, I can't express enough how grateful I am, how grateful the residents are. We are getting updates daily, pictures of the dam and the, and the lake from the residents, concerns that are brought forward, and Mr. Norsini is right on top of it. And I would just like to thank Mr. Norsini, Mr. White, and certainly Mr. Rice for all your hard work and for all your interactions with the residents, and I know that the residents over there are extremely appreciative as well. So it's sad. The turtles were really sad this weekend. It was sad, but hopefully it will grow back and become a wetland area, which is what DEP thinks it will become, and hopefully not present a danger to our residents downstream, which is something that we are still not sure of, because they would not perform a downstream study, even though we asked for it numerous times, as did Newtown Township. So we will see, but thank you all very much for all your efforts.
Lisa, what happened to the turtles?
Well, there are some red-bellied turtles, turtles over there that are endangered, considered endangered, and they, the State Fish and Wildlife, they came out and they trapped a majority of them prior to them dewatering the lake. There are still some there. There are other turtles there. Supposedly, they're coming back out to get them, but, yeah, they were kind of, there's just like a little puddle now, and they were kind of swimming. It was really sad. But apparently, there's been bald eagles over there, as well as there's a beautiful blue heron that comes, and they've been feeding on the fish. There's been a couple of fish that have been left behind, not as many fish as they thought there would be, but, yeah, I wish, had been there when the bald eagles came, so, believe it or not, there are bald eagles and radners.
There's a line in Rocky where they say turtles make great soup. The snappers.
That's not funny. It's very upsetting.
Not the endangered, the snapping turtles. They're not endangered, just Thank you. Yeah, it's always sad to see what, to see something, nature go. Speaking of nature, that went, just real quick, I have, I get one or two emails a week from different residents that want to know, when is that hill by 476 going to get planted? Just, Mr. Norsini, if you can give an update on that, there's a
Sure, Commissioner. I sent an email out to the board some time ago, so, as you know, there was a process we had to go through with PennDOT, so our contractor, who's working pro bono, was not able to start until summer. So you'll notice that the banks of the hill are green. That's the PennDOT-specified type L seed mix that has germinated. What I noted in the email was that we won't get germination on the meadow and wildflower mix until next spring due to the timing. So everybody will see the green type L seed mix on the side. The meadow grasses have been planted, but they will not germinate until spring, and the wildflowers are actually a, he plant, he seeds when the ground is frozen and fractured, and that's when the wildflower will seed. So the other items should be coming up next spring. Just in general, it takes a few seasons for wildflowers to become established, but by next spring, if all goes well, the rest of the area should be vegetated.
And just, thank you. And just one more thing. This is to members of Ward 7. There will be a town hall meeting, which we will have here, November 10th. For those that can't make it or are unable to make it because of COVID, we're seeing about, if we can zoom in questions, like the medical marijuana dispensary. When they gave their presentation, I'd like it here so it can be recorded and memorialized, and the topics there will be traffic safety, as well as zoning issues in Garrett Hill. So that has been on my newsletter, that has been on Facebook, that has been on Nextdoor, it's been all over. I do want to make an announcement here tonight, so everyone knows that, that it's going to happen, at least the meeting's going to happen, where we can start and have a conversation about some of the zoning issues, as well as traffic, which has been a major concern of the ward and a bunch of other topics, and it's all there in my newsletter. Thank you.
Damian?
Yes.
I'm sorry, did you have new or old business?
I do not.
Oh.
I did. I did, I did. I, I would like to thank, I'm very glad that my fellow commissioners here talked about making sure everyone's voice is heard at these meetings, and I think it's incumbent on this board to let all commissioners speak to the extent necessary. As, as everyone's aware, my voice has been the one that has been curtailed by the majority several times, most recently when I wanted to make comments on the Dropbox. So I, I hope that this board will allow all, all of its board members to speak and to get their points as elected officials out to the public, and as everyone knows, I at no time have ever been able to and never have curtailed the speech of any of my fellow commissioners, and I thank them to do the same. Thank you.
Is there any additional new or old business?
I just have one more thing. So there will be a Zoom meeting with the developers of the 200 South Eithin. I want to thank Mr. Norsini for setting that up and Ian for facilitating. This Wednesday at 5:00, I'll be sending the link out in my newsletter. I have posted on my Commissioner Facebook page. I've shared it out with residents who have put it also on the Nextdoor. So it'll be a Zoom call, and it will be information about that prior to them going to the planning commission with their, with the plan, so just to alert.
Why don't, why don't they come to the Community Development Committee, and we'll have a community development meeting?
Thank you. That's a nice, kind offer, but they're going to planning next week, so, thank you.
They're not, they're not mutually exclusive.
Is there any additional new or old business? Public comment?
Baron Gemmer, South Wayne. A quick reminder and request regarding the electronics recycling and shredding event on November 7th, that Saturday here at the township. There's the reminder, because we don't have another meeting before that. The request is, as one that typically partakes in it, I didn't realize this year, because of the state COVID requirement, you have to register ahead of time, and there is a certain number of slots for each half hour. So Mr. Norsini's going to put something more on the website, but I would ask you, as the commissioners, for your constituent newsletters and social media to, to make your constituents aware of that, because I don't know what kind of traffic nightmare there might be if they're checking for these printed-out little tickets or whatever the case might be. So, thank you.
So if I just may add
Thanks, Baron. I would like to follow up on that, that it's, it's a kind of a ticket that you have to sign up for, but there is no cost. So you sign up online through a ticketing service, but it is a free ticket.
So our Public Information Officer, Molly Gallagher, will be having that out, so I just put the word, but that's her work.
Is there any additional
What's the date again?
November 7.
Is there any additional public comment? Hearing none. Commissioners, remember, if you are going to do so, stop by the seat in between Sean and Moira to both pick up your emergency plan packet and to sign the form that is waiting there. There is a pen. Otherwise, I will move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.